...two and invite you all to sign in if you're here for a hearing or just as a something to do for Tuesday evening or Wednesday evening, please sign in.
The signing sheet's right up here.
First order of business will be...
We're on video.
Oh, yes. The meeting is being recorded. Digitally and audio, am I saying that right? And visually, so.
Audio and visual.
Check it out on the YouTube station. We're a big hit. Anyways, we're gonna start off a couple minutes here. We need to do the minutes of March first.
Yes, that's it.
Yep. That's what I wanted to see. The corrections, deletions, additions to the March first minutes?
On the back page, Tony, Tom Pevensi from Steve Boucher trustee indicated that they are searching for earth removal permits. That actually should be the, it should be Steve, Tom Pevensi representing Steve Boucher, period. The planning board indicated that they are searching for earth removal permits, period. And then I would say Mr. Pevensi stated, stated that there's no activity, since 2008, there's been no activity.
So I'll read that correction again.
Okay, it'll read Tom Pevensi representing Steve Boucher trustee.
Trustee.
The planning board indicated they are searching for earth removal permits, period. Mr. Pevensi stated that since 2008, there's been no activity at the site. And the rest of it is fine.
Okay.
Anyone else? Everyone okay with that?
Yep.
Tom, you had something?
I have one on the first page halfway down. A motion was made to grant a waiver for Article eight does not apply to this special permit request. Which special permit is that in relation to?
The current one.
For what?
Well, is it the one Main Street?
Yes.
Yeah, I think I should identify.
Yeah, we are on Main Street. For the one Main Street special permit request, maybe.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Because we read that in three months, we won't remember what that was.
Yeah.
Tom, did you pick up my papers?
Well, that was all part of the public hearing, that all goes together.
What did you get in there?
Nothing, nothing there. Well, March first?
I think you want to do. These two minutes.
Well, you didn't need March first.
Yeah.
Okay. You ready?
Yeah. Got it on the need? That's it for me. I don't wanna read.
Motion to accept the minutes as read.
As amended.
As read. With the updates.
Oh, let me just check this, one second. Yeah, sometime, somehow we wanna make sure we connect the motion for the waiver and the special permit to the special permit, okay?
That all goes under the public hearing?
Yeah, but we can't make, you can't make those motions in a special hearings. In this public hearing, we have to come out of a, we need a reference to the hearing.
Okay.
The public hearing?
Well, it says we came out of the public, the planning board meeting.
Correct.
Reconvene the planning board.
Right, but there's two motions afterwards that need to be referred back to the, to the public hearing.
Which two might those be?
The A motion and the planning board.
Yeah.
Right underneath the reconvene.
Okay, everybody understand that?
Yep.
All right. Now you're up.
Motion to accept the minutes as read and as edited.
Got a second? All in favor?
Yep.
opposed? No vote. Okay, great. By the way, folks, if anybody's here for the Borrego Solar Farm hearing on Williamsville Road, the applicant has requested a continuance, so we won't be taking any testimony or doing anything else except continuing the hearing, so. If you're here for that one, you may not wanna stick around for another hour and a half to hear that again. All right, we're gonna move to a report.
No, that's last.
Yeah, on the master plan survey data, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So Tom, will I run that by us?
The town of Hubbardston completed a master plan survey. We had about 414 people come back and answer it. It's gonna be ready, it's ready to be published in a PDF file will be put online from the town of Hubbardston tomorrow morning. I'll send it over to the town clerk to have her put it online so you can see the whole survey. It's the summary survey with the charts, okay? So I'm gonna just briefly, Ben's only given me 15 minutes to go through a very complicated thing here, so we're just gonna hit on the highlights of each of these questions. So question one, are you a resident of Hubbardston? Ninety-nine percent of the people who answered were residents. There are a couple people, there are four people who are non-residents, but they own property here. And are you a property owner? Again, it's ninety-three, six percent. Actually, 27 people are property owners. People like the open space. And then 35 percent said good schools. And right behind us, good schools was lower taxes. But the majority of people like this town because of rural cha- character of the town. And again, they like the open space. That's what the ser- people answering the survey said. Of the following land uses, which should be encouraged, allowed, or not allowed? Which is very, very interesting. This is one of the, one of the most interesting pieces of all. Of the, the top, of all the, all the uses in town that were listed there, small independent business, 99.26 percent of the people wanted that. Ninety-nine percent of the people wanted agriculture. Ninety-seven percent of the people want restaurants. Ninety-eight percent of the people want single-family homes. Ninety-five percent of people want guest houses. It goes on and on and like, like that. All the uses except for five, the, all the top uses, okay, that people wanted, I mean, it goes from 99 percent all the way down to hotels and motels, which is 50 percent of the people wanted it. Every single one of those uses is allowed under our current zoning now. There's not one of the uses that people, the majority of the people wanted that is not included in our current zoning that we have, which I thought was very interesting. The bottom five things that people don't want in town, marijuana stores, 60 percent, even though the town voted to have the law, change the law. Heavy industry, 61 percent of the people didn't want it. Shopping malls, 66 percent. And 69 percent mobile homes. And 86.84 percent don't want contaminated soils. All those, those bottom five things that the majority of the people want, and I'd say, when I would say the majority, more than 60 percent of the people didn't want, all those things are not allowed under our current zoning anywhere in town, even by special permit. Is that correct? That's correct, right?
Uh, yes, I believe so.
Yeah.
Correct.
But all the other uses that are listed on that, that form that people wanted, and all the people, more than, almost every single one of them, over 50 percent of the people wanted it, are already allowed in our current zoning. We have commercial zoning, we have, and there's many, many uses that are allowed in the commercial zoning sector. Any problems?
What's the takeaway from that? That's kind of a complex answer. What's the simple takeaway?
The simple, the simple takeaway is that the current zoning that we have now allows all the things that people in town wants.
So the zoning is reasonable?
The zoning is reasonable. According to people who answered the survey.
Yeah.
It's interesting, what is your, what is your opinion of the present?
Excuse me, just a minute, Tom. Let me just qualify that by saying that although those uses are allowed, the planning board does not regulate them. Somebody has to come forth with the idea to run a restaurant or run whatever other business is allowed. The planning board does not sponsor those businesses. We do not advocate for those businesses. We're just here to, to make sure everything is regulated correctly. And typically, if somebody wants a business that is allowed under zoning, they go directly to the building inspector and pull a permit. They don't even come here. So, you know, the zoning allows a lot of good ideas, and if anybody would like to start one up, you're welcome to do it.
The, the big question going forward to those, we know that, we know all these businesses that people want are zoned that way. They're allowed by zoning? The reason, but people aren't coming here to open up those businesses. The question that needs to be answered, and that's why we're gonna be doing this economic development, part of the master plan, is why aren't they wanting to come here? Obviously, the zoning is here, the population may be not big enough, so. Taking my time. What was your opinion of Hubbardston's present growth rate? Seventy-one percent of the people think it's, it's about right. The residential, and 60 percent people think of it's too slow for commercial. Okay? I don't, I think people wanna see a lot of these businesses coming into town, but that's, that's pretty much all I can say about that. Over the next 10 years, how would you like to see Hubbardston grow? Overwhelmingly, 66.84 percent wanted controlled growth. Eight percent wanted rapid growth of residential houses, residential. And high, 24 percent wanted high, high, high commercial growth in industrial parks. How do you feel about the current zoning? Fifty percent think it's residential, agriculture's about right, and 46 percent thinks it needs to be changed. So that follows along with the other two places. Are the current zoning, are the current zoning bylaws too restrictive? Forty-nine percent think they're too restrictive. Forty percent think they're about right. And 10 percent of the people think it's not restrictive enough. So basically 50/50 again. One of the five most serious problems facing Hubbardston over the next five years? 68 percent is school funding. 59 percent for road conditions. The ability to provide quality town services is 45 percent. Lack of retail businesses, 45 percent. And again, this, all these numbers, for the lack of retail businesses falls into this. But when you look at, when you go online and you look at this, you can get all the numbers and all the figures. It's pretty, pretty interesting to look at. But 68 percent of the people think school funding is a big issue, which I think everyone in town knows is a big issue. And Quabham Regional School District is working on that. Should the town acquire open space? 56 percent of the people think they should. Basically there, you can look at that one.
Hold on one second, Tom. If that door is open, you could go in and grab some chairs. Hate to see everybody standing up in this hot weather.
Oh, we're looking for the conservation committee?
It's in the lower level of the library.
Oh, okay, thank you.
So the town, so 56 percent of the people wanna preserve open space, and 51 percent wanna preserve the rural character of the town. And 50 percent for recreation. So a lot of people wanna conserve more land. Although they, they're happy to conserve more land, and they're happy to do it with grants, the 82 percent, pretty happy to do it with CPA funds, 65 percent. But only 26 percent of the people wanna take it out of general funds, which just goes along with it. How do you, how do you, should the town subsidize or encourage housing for any of the following groups? The elderly, veterans, and handicaps, all got between 70 and 80 percent. People did, the people who answered the survey didn't particularly wanna have low to moderate income people, or first-time home buyers, or, most people don't want anyone to have. Seventy-two percent actually didn't wanna have any.
Elderly.
Elderly, no, any.
Subsidized.
Subsidized housing. That thought was interesting. Ah, I'm going faster than I can. Please rate the, rate the quality of services performed by various departments and boards in the town of Hubbardston. The police department, 90 percent of the people gave it a positive rating. The fire department gave it 87 percent. The ambulance service, 86 percent. The town website, 77 percent. The town clerk, 72 percent. And the highway department, 68 percent. And then, Quabham Regional School was 57 percent. Then you get into the rest of them, the libraries, the parks, the select board, and the building inspectors. It's a mixed bag, but what's, what actually shows on that mixed bag is that most people, 38, 40, 35, 36, 49 percent of the people have no opinion. So as you're looking at this thing, a lot of the people didn't have an opinion, so there's some people that don't like it, and some people that do like it, but a lot of people just don't have an opinion. So that's what you take away from that. But I think the basic core services that the town provides, fire, police, ambulance, town clerk, highway department, people are reasonably happy. The highway department, only 2 percent of the people didn't have an opinion, but 68.26 of the people who answered the survey were very happy with the town service, with the highway department.
What page you want?
That's page, well, my, my pages are different.
You're going to Q17.
Seventeen or 23?
I'm going to 17.
Going to 17.
Should any of the town services is very interesting, I think, should any of the town services be regionalized? And basically, their answer is no. Fire, 87 percent, no. Police, 86 percent. Ambulance, 78 percent, no. Town administrative, parks and recreation, highway department, any assessors, all are overwhelmingly no. The only thing that was 50/50 was the senior center. But a lot of people also said none of the, anything should be regionalized, which I thought was quite interesting.
I had to laugh at the phone coverage.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, well, that was one of the things, on the others, the question 16 is, one of the things that people really didn't like in town was the phone service, so.
Lack of.
Lack of. The town charter, the question on the town charter, again, 76 percent of the people had no opinions. And then you can read the rest of the chart. I'm gonna go with the time. Do you think Hubbardston?
Give it two more minutes.
Yeah, thanks. Do you think the town of Hubbardston needs to build a new municipal building? This is a hot topic in town. 71.03 percent said yes, 28 percent said no. 29 percent said no. Which is interesting. Okay? Which building should be built first, if you had your choice? One, two, three, and four. 69 percent said a new, 69.28 percent said a new public safety building. 40.73 percent, the, the second choice was new town office. The third choice would be the library renovation. And then the fourth choice was a new senior center. Just different, I wouldn't, I did not expect that. Okay? And then there, the rest of the, the survey, there's 144 comments. So we have 414 people, we had about 20 percent of, well, you know, almost 20 percent. 144 people made written comments. And all those comments are on here. Every, you can go through and read them. Some are good, some are bad. Some of them I'm not happy with, but some of them I am. So it's really interesting, the survey. If anyone wants, has any questions about this, or wants to discuss it anymore, just give me a call. Be happy to discuss it with them. When we get into the master plan, ecmo, especially the economic development of the master plan, this, these numbers will be integral part of the new master plan, so.
Where, where is this gonna be posted or made available to the public?
On the town website. I think it's gonna be under the planning board, they have a place to put it there, right?
Right.
I'm gonna ask Joyce to put it on the front page.
Some kind of a link to it.
A link to it, and they can pick up, it's a PDF file, so.
It might be under reports and documents. Those are the most relevant.
I'm trying to get Joyce, yeah, I'm trying to get Joyce to put it on the front.
Tom, what was the, what was the percentage of returns?
We got 414 and out of.
What was that, 6 percent?
Dick, what was that? Nine percent.
And that's excellent numbers now.
That's a really good number, yeah. I would just say Dick Eaton's actually, yeah, that's twice what we expected, you know.
It lends a validity to the results.
All the, everything that was imported online, it just goes online. We couldn't, we had, we had 47 or 50, something like that, hand notes that we put in. I put all the, I entered all the data and typed in everything. And Tom Robinson double-checked that I put everything in the right spot, so. And if anyone wants to look at any of those, we can verify it and give you copies of it.
I got a question, Tom. You said the summary survey and the charts were gonna be on the PDF on the website?
Yeah.
Are the comments gonna be on there?
Yep, the comments will be on there as well, yep.
Separate PDF?
No, it's all the same. Forty, 48 pages, 49 pages.
Thank you, Tom.
Anyone else? No?
And all of this data, we hope to incorporate into the rewriting of the master plan. And if anybody here who would like to volunteer to help us write that master plan, we'd love to have you come by because we need authors. What we're hoping to do is to have a separate author for each chapter of the master plan under the direction of Dick Eaton, our consultant. It's not gonna be a huge effort if we break it down into small pieces, but we would desperately like to have somebody give us a hand with that, so. If you have any type of desire to write, you may not, you'll even get it published, so please, come by and see us.
Dick, just a quick thing from Dick. What, what, how did this refer, how did this compare to the 1988?
Yeah, that, it was very, very similar. I was struck with the similarities between the survey that was done in 1988 and what was done now, 30 years past. The values are the same, the, what the town wanted was the same. The two major exceptions were that the, in 1988, the schools were very strong, were doing a very good job. Today, that was the biggest issue in town, the same as roads. Roads were the biggest issue in town, second biggest issue in town. But other than that, it was very, very similar to 1988.
It struck me that most people are pretty happy with the services they get in town with all the different committees, and I think that's, that's a good thing. Everyone, everyone, as dead, most, as everyone knows, everyone, virtually everyone in the town is volunteers, and everyone works really hard.
Good. Well, thank you very much. We're gonna move right along. We're a little bit late for the next hearing, for the first hearing, I should say. Accept the motion to recess the planning board in order to continue with the hearing for the Marinelli earth removal permit.
Does that make sense, your motion?
A second.
All in favor? Opposed? So voted. Planning board is in recess, and we're going to continue now with the hearing that we have started two months ago, actually. Can, do you have that file for me? So, just to give a quick update, this is a, an application for gravel removal on the Marinelli, Prue, DJ Palm nominee trust, did I get it right?
Yep.
Good. Gravel pit that's located off Pitcherville Road. We've had two meetings on it so far. We've had information given by Mr. Bowdre from Meridian Associates. And we've also had a site visit on the premises. We're gonna continue today. Mr. Bowdre's got some more information to give to us. And the format that we use for this hearing is the applicant continues the presentation, the board gets first chance to ask any questions, and then I'm going to move it along tonight because we haven't had an opportunity to hear from the citizens, so I wanna get some comments tonight from everybody who might be here. So I'll take, take it away, Mr. Bowdre. I know we got some updated stuff, and we'll go from there.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mark Bowdre from Meridian Associates. I'm a professional engineer here in Massachusetts, and we are the engineers for the, for this earth removal application. And we met first with the board back on March 29th, if I recall. And we probably spent a couple hours going through the, the, the project plans. At that point, we had had the peer review completed by your consultant, Places Associates, and so we had those comments that we could go through as well. And then a couple weeks ago, we reconvened on the, on the property to, to walk it. It's a, quite a large property, but I think it was a productive site visit. We had a lot of, you know, questions and back and forth and exchange of additional information and whatnot. So we have, since that time, made some, I think, fairly significant progress that we wanted to share with the board tonight. The, we have this evening, I know it's extremely short notice and that the board has not had an opportunity to review this information. It was just provided in advance form in the, in our response letter to your consultant this afternoon. Clearly not giving, you know, much if any time to do any kind of review, but just wanted to get a, an advanced copy out, out there. So I, a couple things. We, I do have some, a response, a formal response letter. to the, um, uh, Places Associates comments from, um, that we had talked about at the previous meeting. And, uh, I also have, and, and at this particular moment, I'm not suggesting that we, we, that you, you all read this just yet, but what I'd like to do is go through a few, um, of the, uh, you know, significant updates to the drawings. Uh, one more?
I got one.
Okay. I was gonna give one to your consultant also. Okay, that, that's fine, that's fine.
These updated drawings, too?
Updated drawings are, uh, are, are here as well, they're a reduced size set. I've got the one large copy here, uh, tonight, but we could certainly provide additional copies of that to, uh, to the board, of course. I've got a set for the, your consultant as well. Again, it's a small size set, we'll provide full size. What I'd like to do is, um, you know, we can definitely go through the, the points in the letter, but just real quick, uh, maybe go through a couple, uh, significant things on, on, on the plans. Since the last meeting, we, uh, we were able to, I, I know one of the comments that came through, uh, on your, on the review, as well as, uh, it was discussed at the, uh, at the first hearing, it was discussed on site, was the desire of the board to, um, have the topographic information updated. And the reason for that is it, it dated back, as far back as two thousand and six, was, uh, was, was part of the, um, the permit and, and plan set that were issued back in twenty twelve for a different applicant at that point. And, um, there was some, uh, miscellaneous work that we had done from a survey standpoint to, uh, supplement the plan. But a- as we all know and talked about last time, it's, uh, the, the board issued a permit in twenty twelve for an operation on this property. Some extraction did occur, um, you know, around twenty thirteen or so. It was not really clear, uh, what, how much material or where, and we talked about that at the, at the site walk also, but after the site walk, we were able to, uh, we were fortunate to find out that, um, a, a, a different company had, had done, um, aerial photogrammetric mapping of this property back in twenty fourteen, which was actually after the, uh, the operat- the extraction operation was done by the previous, uh, permitee.